Glad that all of y'all are here. Um, so then if we're live, then we're live. Then the first, um, the first charter and alternative school board, uh, meeting, um, has started. Let's see, how do I want to kick this off? I want to first start off by, um, just saying that this is our first meeting. We have not had, nobody's missed any meetings. We haven't had any meetings up to, up to this point that anybody has forgotten about. I have been intentionally, um, just making sure that if we're going to have a meeting and we're going to be talking about something, then I want to make sure that it is, um, student focused, um, for at least half of our time. And then the other half of the time, then we can talk about the, um, the, the other pieces that help us drive our student focused, um, graduate portion where we're trying to get to. So it's not like we're just going to be up here talking about stuff, just randomly talking about stuff. Everything that we talk about should have something to do with the student, impact the student in some way, shape, form or fashion. That does not mean that we won't talk about money because it takes money to buy land. And so, um, having money or not having money impacts students, but we're not going to spend, um, 80% of our conversation talking about, I don't have enough money. And so, um, with that being said, let me get the, the agenda out.
All right.
Can you bring Karina over? Thanks.
It's not letting me share my screen or open them.
Wait, they're pop up now.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience, Karina. Forgot to tell you that.
Working on it. Technology, it's still Monday and it's raining. Maybe that's what, maybe the, our technology don't like the rain. We need the rain. I'm so glad for the rain right now. If I get another 80 to 90 degree day, I'll be so mad. All right, I'm gonna turn this over to.
I'm just telling you, Terry Proctor makes the world go around.
Man, listen.
Uh, yes.
Listen, he, he's one of the people that we gotta check in. If he ain't okay, then shut it all down. Him and Kara. Don't, don't play. We'll, we'll shut this whole thing down. Let her say she ain't ready. Next month's meeting is. All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I have my volume off. Ailey, can you hear me? Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Um, we have a very kind of focused agenda today. Um, Tara, do you want to go over the agenda?
Sure. We're going to, uh, start today with the welcome and introduction of the 2022-23 committee members because we have new committee this year. Uh, we're going to talk about a school facilities update, uh, with the charter schools, uh, the charter school new application process, and then talk about the charter school new application evaluations.
Okay. Director Green, I don't see our students here today. So we can do that next time.
Next time.
Okay, great. Okay, we do want to just start by acknowledging, um, that our land and that our land is on native land. One of the things that we have on this slide is we have, um, one of the activities that's actually in our tribal history, shared history curriculum, which talks about learning about Oregon. Currently, we're on Chinook land and our closest tribes are Soletts, Grand Ron and Cowlets in Washington. Um, but, uh, one of the activities for students at different ages is to look at the state of Oregon and then also to identify the nine nations that are also located in Oregon. We'll start with some great news, which is our charter school facilities update. So Emerson, some folks might remember Emerson K5 Charter School have been looking for, um, working with their landlord around new lease options. And so their lease was due to expire December of this year and they were, uh, working kind of feverishly to secure, uh, a facility. And we have great news, two things. One is they reached a new agreement to be able to do so through the end of the school year. Um, and then secondly, and very exciting, Tara will talk more, but after a 20-year search for a long-term facility, they've identified a new facility and signed a 15-year lease.
Nice.
With five-year, uh, lease options.
Nice.
And so their expected, um, occupancy of the new facility is for September of next year. And Tara can share really fancy photos and share some more information.
So they've shared with us some of their renderings of the new site post-leasehold improvements. The facility will have six, they're small, so it will have six classrooms. Um, all the classrooms will have natural light, have a large, uh, all, all-purpose space. That's also the library. And then also there are smaller, uh, small group special ed office rooms. And they're, they're very excited about this. Uh, the location is easy access for all public transportation. It's a school that makes use of a lot of field study options, and so having that quick access to public transportation is great. It's near PSU, uh, it's near Pettigrove Park, um, and the landlord has begun taking input from students on building a playground that will be specific for the school in one of the plazas of the building where they're going to be. So they, it's all big, good news. I recently, they made the announcement at the end of October. I asked the director, uh, Sunita, what the response has been, and I got back, general joy and dancing in the streets. But that was good news. So that's great news for Emerson.
Yeah. Great. Okay, and then the next, um, item of business is, is the primary topic for today, which is the new charter school application. So as you know, statute defines our process for applications. And so we received by May 1st, kind of this, the next few slides are really about statute. So by May 1st, as is due, if a school wishes to apply, they need to, um, submit their letter. So we received one letter.
Okay.
Um, in May, and that was from RISE's Schoolhouse Charter School proposal. Um, by July 15th, the application is due. Um, again, that's, that's a state date, and so they submitted their application, um, on July 15th. And then the district has 30 days to review for completeness. The initial 30-day review, um, found that the application was incomplete. And so the process is that we give that feedback back to the applicant and then we'll have, um, another, uh, amount of time, 30 days to, to remedy that. So they submitted, resubmitted their application and it was found to be complete, um, and which we notified the applicant of on September 19th. Then within, the next step for statute is within 60 days, then a public hearing, um, must be held. Um, and so the hearing is scheduled for November 17th, um, from 5:00 to 6:30. After the public hearing is held, the district has 30 days to hold a full board vote to approve or deny the proposal. So the full board, um, will, um, the full board vote has already been scheduled and will occur at the December 12th, uh, meeting, um, regular PPS Board of Education.
December 13th.
13th. Oh. Okay. Correction, at the, at December meeting, the full board vote will take place. That if the board votes to approve, then the next step is for contract negotiations to begin between the charter school office and, um, and, uh, applicant. If the school board votes to deny, then the next step is the applicant is given the reasons for denial. Um, the applicant may choose then to amend their proposal and to address the concerns that we would have outlined or would have been outlined and resubmit the application to the school board, or they may choose to accept the reasons for denial and not proceed.
Question. So is there any reason why we wouldn't do all of the legwork with them between now and that date to ensure that by the time they get there, they've got everything they need to?
So those are great questions. Do you want it?
We're, so in terms of, you're saying, uh, in terms of offering support while they're going through the process.
Right.
So, uh, prior to the time we receive the application completed, we offer meetings and support in filling out various parts of the application and being clear about what the expectations are and what things they might need to, um, address specifically. Um, we held four meetings with this particular applicant in that period of time between when they gave us their, uh, letter of intent and when they submitted the application. During the application review period, while we're actually looking at it and evaluating it, statute, uh, requires that we no longer receive further information because we're reviewing the application as is until we have information back to them about whether or not, uh, we're going to, um, uh, the board votes, whether they're going to approve or deny. At that time, the board does give that information back about these are the things, reasons that we're doing the denial. And then from that period, if they ask for support or help in addressing those things, we will meet with them again and help with that. When they provide the resubmission back to us to review again, then we can't review them during that period of time. So in that little period of time between what is, what statute calls a reasonable, reasonable period of time between a vote to deny the application and their resubmitting it. They can ask for technical support. What does this mean? What, how, like, various options they can do.
And I would just, um, I would just, thanks Tara. And I would just say that that's one of the reasons we always encourage, if you are considering applying, and you can always come and just have a conversation about the application process. And we also encourage people, if they're considering applying, the sooner they submit their letter of intention to apply, then we are allowed to provide that technical assistance prior to receiving the formal submission. And so that's where, that's where we can do a lot of that work. And like Tara just said, we've met with them four times in between that process.
I just want to, like, you know, when you're looking at different things, I don't want to waste staff time or board time. And what sense does it make to keep having people, we're gonna host a meeting, schedule, um, when we could have had this taken care of ahead of time? And staff has got a lot of stuff that they need to be working on so that we can focus it so that, but anyway, I'm, I'm sure we're doing that. I, I just wanted to see where, see what that looked like. And now I know this is my first one.
Yeah.
Like this, so like, let's go team.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question for?
Feel free.
Just to make sure, because I think, I, I hear your, your point. And can you differentiate between, on the denial piece, between, you know, check the box, the checklist, if you will, of the documents getting done, and then the philosophical, political view that a board member made?
So that's our whole, so, so, yes, and that's what we're going to review today in the meeting, is we're going to go through this. And I should have actually finished this slide before I, uh, just to bookend, I'll do this slide. But that's actually, so I'm gonna, just to give an overview, so thank you for raising that. So I'm gonna give an overview of statute. We're gonna give an overview of kind of where we are with this particular applicant. And then we're gonna go through section by section, how they score and what the feedback has been. And then we're gonna ask, we're also gonna open it up and ask for questions from, from, um, any directors or any, uh, folks for questions at the end. But that's, that's the intention of today, is to provide you with the feedback of what we received, what the review process was and what we discovered.
So in the future, say, yes, so wait until I'm done, and then that will have answered your questions, Director Green.
Well, it's me.
So keep it to yourself, close your trap, let me finish what I gotta say, and then, I got it, I got it.
I said no such thing. So I will just bookend this though. So after the public hearing is held, the district has 30 days to hold a full board vote to approve or deny. Following the school board charter application denial, if the board chooses to deny, then the board has 30 days to approve or deny the resubmitted proposal. So if, if, if it's denied, we send it back to them, they have time in that amount of time, again, as Tara said, if it's, if it's between formal submittals, then we can provide some support and some guidance. Once they submit again, if it was denied and if they chose to continue and resubmit, then the board, again, has 30 days to approve or deny the resubmitted proposal. If the resubmitted proposal is denied, meaning like a second school board denial, the applicant may follow the appeal process if they wish, or they may wish to decide at that time to conclude the process. Okay, this is all Tara.
This is what we call charter school application chutes and ladders. So what this shows is across the top are the general statutory, uh, requirements of a charter school application. And we are currently in the fifth box from the left where it says, school district has 60 days to hold a public hearing. So we're in that 60 days right now. And the next step is the, uh, the board votes on the evaluated proposal within 30 days of the public hearing. So you can see at the start of that step, if you look down, the chutes and ladders part, that reveals what the appeal process might be and where they might, what the timelines are. These, all of those, um, are dependent on what the applicant chooses to do at that point and what the result at each step of that happens. There's a lot of.
Visual detail.
Yeah, a lot of visual detail, but it is, just so you know, you have that resource in case there are questions around timelines or statutes.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to shift and be specific about the specific application that we received. So the RISE's Schoolhouse Charter School application was reviewed by a multidisciplinary team of district staff. So the team was comprised of multiple pathways to graduation staff, the charters, including the charter school office, um, representatives from the budget office, from research assessment and accountability, and from our racial equity and social justice, uh, department. So we had multiple people reviewing, as we always do in the review, which is the practice when we review a charter school application. So the application review summary is provided, and then alone, the summary does not constitute, um, the recommendation. The summary informs questions to be asked in the public hearing. So the superintendent's final decision, whether to recommend to the board, uh, approval or to reject the proposal, will be based on the information gathered throughout the entire process. So, um, that is that. And then here is all the things that we are bound by. It's very, it's very scripted with regard to how we evaluate a charter school application. And so Tara's gonna go over the joyful state statute.
Right. So it is, uh, the, um, the review rubric that we use to review a proposal is also given as a template to the applicants ahead of time, so they know exactly what will be used to review. Um, and, uh, and each section of the review aligns to a section of the application, and it is all aligned to statute. Specifically, ORS 338 dot O55, section three, and 338 dot 945, section three, um, where these things are, um, outlined. So there are nine criteria. Uh, the first is the, uh, demonstrated sustainable support for the proposed school by teachers, parents, students, and other community members. And that also includes comments received at the public hearing, which is yet to happen. Uh, the next one is demonstrated financial stability of the school, including demonstrated ability of the school to have a sound financial management that's in place at the time the school begins and that meets the requirements of statute, ORS 338. The third one is the capability of the applicant in terms of support and planning to provide comprehensive instructional programs to the students. The capability of the applicant in terms of support and planning to provide comprehensive instructional programs to students identified as academically low achieving. And the next, sorry about that. No worries. Multitasking. Oops. Uh, this next, um, criteria, the adequacy of information provided as required by ORS 338 dot O45, section two and three, is a place in statute that allows districts to put in their own districts, either, um, specific strategic plan criteria or other things. Um, in, by law, the district can do that as part of the application. So for PPS, for our application, this section includes, uh, understanding employment qualifications for all levels of staffs that the charter school will be employing. Understanding the professional development plan for how that will be provided and planned for teaching and administrative staff. Understanding the professional development plan for racial equity and cultural responsiveness. Also including plans for student services like child nutrition, uh, transportation. Those are not in statute, but they are in the portion of the application that we are allowed by statute to add our own criteria to. So we have added those. And then lastly, uh, we've added performance accountability, specifically around some particular school goals and measurement of school goals and how the school will use their performance data to adjust their program as needed. So those are all added into the application beyond statute.
So I think, Jonathan, I just want to say, I think this, this is where we as a district are able to add specifically, kind of what you were speaking of, is like, in, for our district specifically, like, what are the thing, what are our values and how do we get, put some criteria in there that'll guide the app, the, um, scoring process?
And then, uh, whether or not the value of the public charter school is outweighed by any directly identifiable, significant adverse impact on the quality of public education of students residing in the school district. Uh, whether or not there are arrangements for any necessary special education and related services for children with disabilities, these are the statutory criteria. And then the last two, uh, this, uh, next one really is, does not necessarily apply unless a school is closing, whether or not there are alternative arrangements for students and teachers who choose not to attend or who choose not to be employed by the public charter school. That's intentionally in statute for entire districts that choose to turn their one school into a charter school. So that's not, doesn't necessarily apply to PPS. And the final one is the prior history, if any of the applicant in operating a public charter school or providing educational services.
Okay. Okay, so as we look and move towards the sharing information about the evaluation summary, we want to start with, um, appreciations. And so a couple of appreciations are, we want to acknowledge that a great deal of work has gone into submitting the completed charter school application on the part of, uh, the applicant and in addressing all criteria. Um, the RISE's Schoolhouse Charter School application shows a deep appreciation of Montessori education and a commitment to making educational, making an educational option that's often only valuable in private schools through a public school option. So we want to acknowledge that. And then, then we'll move on to, um, the application review time, team did identify three of the nine sections as does not meet criteria and six of the sections as nearly meets criteria. None of the nine sections were found to meet criteria. So particular areas of concern specifically were section two, demand for the program, section four, instructional program, and section five, educational program for academically low achieving students. So the summary table, now Tara's gonna go kind of, um, section by section.
Okay, so, and in your materials, you have the entire summary table that includes all the comments. Um, what we have here is just summarized, uh, the ratings that are summarized and, uh, some just general comments on the areas of most concern. If you look at the summary table, we can see section two, demand for the program. Uh, the review team, uh, commented that the application does not provide evidence of demonstrated sustainable support by teachers, students, parents, and other community members. There's little evidence of community demand for the program. And those specific areas to find that, if you're looking in your, uh, in your, hand out our pages seven to 11 of the review summary. Of particular note in that section, uh, we ask for, um, s, uh, family surveys that also give information about families who may be interested in having their students attend the school during the term of the proposed charter. Um, we'd like to see as many surveys come in as the school is hoping to open with, for students. Uh, the school's proposed enrollment for their first year would be 80 students, and we received six surveys. Um, of those six surveys, it represented seven students, and four of those students would be of school age for next fall, which is when they would propose opening. So we had not, not a lot of data to work with in terms of there being community support, in that active way of people wanting to be part of the community and attend the school. So that was probably the most concern, that item number two about demand for the program. Uh, additionally, for section four, which was about, uh, instructional program, um, the applicant does not provide evidence of capability to provide comprehensive instructional programs to students. Um, specifically, there's little to no evidence of how the program would be culturally responsive and lean in to best serve the target population, which the application defined as underserved families in North and Northeast Portland. Uh, and then additionally, in section five, which is regarding educational program for academically low achieving students, uh, the committee felt the application does not provide evidence of capability to specifically provide comprehensive instruction to students identified as academically low achieving. And again, specifically, it was, uh, referring to the concern and targeted interventions, uh, that would, you would want to find about their, uh, specific population they want to, and there was little to no evidence of work in that area. Some additional concerns in some of the categories that were nearly meets, um, the financial and organizational plan does not provide evidence of financial soundness specifically related to realistic budget assumptions. Many of the reviewers commented that the plan, the budget included a plan that had licensed teachers, uh, working at an average salary of $40,000 a year and did not have any health benefits associated for the first two years of the school being, um, open. So we, uh, wanted to point that out as well, that, uh, the committee felt that was not necessarily realistic assumptions in terms of being able to staff based on that. Uh, there were other financial and organizational concerns, um, additionally around financial soundness and how the initial startup year was to be funded. It appeared, um, some grants and, uh, a GoFundMe hopefully to fund the initial startup. And the finance, specifically financial team, um, felt that was not going to be a reliable, uh, startup funding. Um, and then, uh, some last couple concerns, the application did not contain specificity about how the proposed school would involve and serve its stated target population. Um, beyond stating that their target population was underserved families in North and Northeast Portland, there was not a lot of any other direct, uh, mention of that as a. And then, uh, also significantly, the application did not adequately differentiate this proposal from an existing K8 Montessori charter school in North Portland, already existing. So, and that is a, uh, charter sponsored by, uh, the state. Those are the primary concerns.
One slide left, and then we have questions. So, um, just the next steps. Um, so just sharing the next steps. The next step in the process is for the public hearing that's scheduled, like, uh, we stated on November 17th from 5:00 to 6:30. The hearing format includes a presentation from the applicant, public testimony and support of, and public testimony, and if there is any, and opposition of, and time for the board committee to ask questions of the applicant. Then based on the information shared in this application summary review, suggested questions will be developed and shared with the applicant in preparation for the public hearing. So what's typically our practice is we will, as staff, create questions, um, that you may or choose or choose, you, you have as a reference, um, as a board committee to ask the applicant. And we will also, um, in full transparency, share some, many of those questions with the applicant as well, to say, these are areas I would be prepared to answer questions in. So, um, so those are our next steps. And then now we're to the questions part. That's what we have.
Yeah. Ailey, you got any questions you'd like to bring forward?
I just, we, this group had submitted an application last year, correct? That we had then given them some advice and recommendations on. And then they came back this year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Were any of the areas of concern that we lifted up last time, areas that we're still of concern this time?
Yes, specifically the involvement of the community and evidence of community, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna have questions probably about feasibility. I'm gonna have questions probably about feasibility or sustainability, like how you go keep this, this school afloat? Because it's the, the last thing the, the kids in our, the kids that we're serving right now need is inconsistency to, to start and stop, start and stop to, whether it be one families or 80 families. The idea of starting and stopping something, that's just not good for them. We, we seen what that does. So I'm gonna have concerns or questions about that. Like to see some more information about that. And then I think I'm a, I'm a wait and see how this plays out because it's one thing to, it's one thing to talk about and say that I want to serve a specific community. A lot of people say this stuff. I wanna, I wanna serve the black community and I want to serve the low income community. Well, talking about serving the black community is completely different from being intentional about how we're going to serve the black community. And so I'm going to, I'm gonna be curious, I want to see how that's going. Like, how are you connecting with the black community and where is, where is that black voice at? Cause the last thing that I want to see, and I don't know if this is the time or space, but since I got the mic, I may as well see it. The last thing I want to see is a bunch of white moms coming in telling me about what a black community needs and why what we're doing is best for the black community and this is going to be great for y'all and then you ain't talk to us. So if you go tell me what's best for us, at least have a conversation with me. Take me out to eat, buy me a drink or something, do something. But don't just come in and tell me I know what's best for black people and you ain't talk to black people. But that's not, that may not be their focus. And so I could be, you know what I'm saying, speaking out of tongue. And if that's the case, then I apologize. But if it's, if it is the case, I'm going to suggest you do something different. And you be a lot more intentional about how you engage and act and focus on the, the black community. So I, I'm, I'm interested out to see what they, what they say. I'm interested in the public comment. I want everybody to make it and I want to see everybody succeed. I feel like, you know, saying our charter schools that they serve niches that, you know, saying oftentimes don't get served in, in public schools. Same's with our alternative schools. So I want, I want to see them succeed. I want to see them thrive. But be honest about the lane that you're trying to get in. And yeah, that's all I gotta really speak to on that. So, all right, sounds good.
Right.
Listen, so.
That's, that's us for the charter school application. And then that's, that was the last.
That's the breadth of this. So, all right, so the last thing that I was going to is to, again, everybody was here, you heard me say what I want our folks to be on this year. I've gotten around to a lot of the schools, alternative schools. I haven't got around to as many of the charter schools to, to hear what, what, you know, some of the things that they want to bring up as concerns. But I, I want to hear from, from everyone. So I'm establishing a, a schedule and a game plan so that over the next, the next month or so, we can step understanding barring the things that we have to do. There are some meetings that we have to have, we have to get those on the calendar, those are going to be scheduled. But barring those, up between now and January, we need to be establishing a game plan on what it is that we're going to be focusing on for the rest of the year and how the things that we focus on are going to be getting us closer to our graduation picture. Like what, what we want to see for our students, all of our students succeeding. See, I don't, unfortunately, I don't separate the alternative and charter schools from regular public schools. And so I, to me, they're all locked in. And so therefore, I want to know, how are the kids in our alternative schools? How are they getting closer to the graduation rate? How are the numbers in those schools disappearing, going away? Because I don't want to minimize it. I want to destroy it so that it's no longer, it's no longer there. And so how are we doing that, right? And so all of our meetings have to be, have to have some level of data in them speaking to how our schools, how our schools are doing, whether all the committee members or the alternative school members show up. I feel like it's our, it's gonna be our, we need to reach out. So where are we at this quarter with numbers? I need to know where we're at and how do we do? And then what did we change? What do we need to change? How do we get us closer to this? And then how can a district, how can we support you in, in doing that? Cause you know, you, you signed on that this is what you wanted to do and that this is what you were going to do. I just want to be the accountability measure stick that says, are you doing what you said you were gonna do? Or did you two lie to us? And if you lied to us, then why are we still, you know, let's, let's stop, let's stop. And so that's, that's where I live. So with that being said, I've got, I've got some people here. Y'all have heard my spiel. You see how I feel. I'm not politically correct, so I probably didn't say the words as polished as, as, as some would have liked me to say it. But it's still, it's still what I'm doing. And so it's still where I'm at. So now with that being said, what would you like to put on the table right now? And we can just start right here and work our way that way. And we're gonna go this like this. So because she's in the back, we go boom, 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 and then go that way. So Joe is last.
Oh my God. That's a lot of pressure.
No pressure, no pressure.
What, you're asking me to, to what would I like to put on the table?
Focus points.
Focus points.
Focus points.
Dr. Jay, can you introduce yourself so everybody knows who.
I'm Dr. Jennifer Stackhouse. I'm the executive director of the Portland Village Charter School. Currently in North Portland. I know topics that often come up for charter schools. I think one thing, and we touched on it a bit last year is blessing, that's always a hot topic. Transportation for families, that's always been.
Oh, one second, Dr. Jay, I'm sorry. Who's taking notes? Cause it's not me. Okay.
I think we have a fancy system though, that also.
I just want to make sure somebody is writing, cause I'm not.
And I would love to, to thought partner with my executive directors, cause this is me just talking off the cuff. So if you're okay with me also checking in with them to get their input, but.
Can I be invited to some of those?
Of course, please.
I'd love to, if they want to have like a, a group, just send me a message. Yeah, I, I like coffee. Just send me a message. Y'all really gotta go through a bunch of people. I'm public record. I was elected in. So if you need me to show up, I don't mind showing up.
Great. We'd love, we'd love to have you, you know, I, I know facilities are always a challenge that we are all facing and struggling with. That's a big challenge for charter schools just because of, you know, a lot of the struggles with us having to come up with funding for that. The requirements around the educational occupancy rating, I'm very excited for Emerson. That sounds great for them. And Portland Village School is still in that process ourselves of finding a new home. So that's a big one for charter schools. Yeah. And then I think, I think continuing to develop this partnership with the district so that we really are a team and we're all working together really well. I, I love that and I'm excited to see that continue. So I'll, I will make sure that we find a time to, to meet with executive directors and, and people are welcome to come to that. So we can kind of talk about talking points and what it is that is a focus for us. Those are my initial thoughts.
Okay, sounds good.
And I would just share Director Brand that we meet with the charter directors every Tuesday morning.
Yes.
Nobody invited me to those. Maybe you did and I didn't know about it and I apologize.
You'll be invited now.
Cause that's a lot of emails I get. And so, yeah. I'm gonna do better. They invited me. It was all me. And you know, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do better about being a part of those. When I'm there, I want what y'all's needs, what your heartbeat, I want that to be the focus so that we can come back and we can, we can reassess how we, how we, how do we become a support. There may be some things, I just want to be crystal clear. There may be some things that, yes, just not go be any movement on. And I have no problem saying, yeah, that's, that'd be great. And in 10 years, we'll talk about it. But today, let's, let's focus on these kids. I have no problem saying that to anybody, anytime, anywhere when I know that that's the, that's the case. I'm not gonna string people along. So, but I do want to hear because if I don't know, then I ain't even got a chance. Tom?
Tom DeJardine, Executive Director of Scott Learning Center. Before I give my list or add to the list, I want to thank Director Brand because he just came by to visit as many of the CBOs in charter schools as he can. We appreciate your visit through the air, unannounced. It was nice though.
I told you this, but I do, I don't be playing. If I say I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it.
You don't know when.
Doubt well. So I also want to, or facilities is a, is an issue.
Okay.
That should probably be a standing issue. Enrollment, enrollment support, special education and student investment account are four big issues.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Chad Love, Portland Community College, Gateway and Yes to College. We currently have 28 graduates, 18 GEDs and eight diplomas given out to Portland Public School students from July to now. But what's important to recognize when understanding that is that that is not a graduation rate. That's not a cohort rate because those students have already been in and left other schools. So I think that we have to have a deeper dive into what it means to understand our data and how our successes are counted in relation to how a traditional high school is counted. And I'll leave it there.
We got Dr. Adams. I'm, I'm sure between him and, and Dr. Adams and all the stuff, he, he's a wizard when it comes to that data stuff. Man, he, he knows data. So I don't even, I just, he's the man I love to hate. Cause he, he gives me the news whether I'm gonna like it or not. He just gives me data. And it's just like, God, I love that man. And sometimes I just hate what he has to say, but I can't grow without it. So I'm sure we'll figure something out. So, thank you.
I do want to say that part, just to tag along onto Jeff, that this has been a discussion that we've been having for decades, right? Related to our contracted alternative school data. So there are a lot of, there's precedent to look at in terms of how we've been thinking about data. So we can give some information about that in future again.
And it'd be great to bring it to a meeting.
Fantastic. I'm, I'm glad we're already thinking about it. Let's, let's get it. Mr. Joe.
Thank you. Director Andrew McFerran, President and CEO of Portland OIC, in Rosemary Anderson High School. You know, I, I came over here today to stand on the table. But I'm just sad because we've lost another student this weekend, Dante Davis. Circumpted this extreme violence, shot in the head. He was at our north campus. But like, like it's been said, I think it's already been said. If we could, I'd like to see us continue to partner together to have these discussions about those items. I will say that I am very appreciative of the district in so many ways. Cause even we don't get what we want, when we want it, it's always, it's not because we don't have, we're not, we don't feel supported. So I just want to say that. So definitely feel supported. For, for us, we're, you know, we're 77% kids of COVID. And one of the problems that may be unique to Rosemary Anderson High School, I've been mentioning this before. So this won't come as a surprise, but historically, we have either met or exceeded or came up just a little bit short on, in our enrollment, pre-COVID. But now, you know, for example, September, we're experiencing low enrollment. I don't see it changing anytime real soon, but September, we're at 62%, which is cra- for us is crazy. We, we tend to start low and then go up over time. But I, I, I'm just trying, we've built, because of the partnership, we've been able to build a pretty good system and, and continue to improve our back office, professional development, keep, maintain multiple sites. So the kids that are in groups, we can keep them separated. Mr. McGee runs a campus and he goes intimately, keeping groups separated. And so, yeah, I just want to kind of figure this out together. Like how do we, I, I think, I think over time, I think enrollment for us, we'll get back up. But I think, and I'm looking at, when I'm talking to my board and, and those other stakeholders, I'm thinking it's at least going to be like a three-year process. And I guess my fear, and I just throwing it out there, is that if we had to close one of our sites, that could have implications because that would limit our ability to keep students, you know, who don't need to be mixing. You know, so anyway, I don't have a solution to it. I don't, I don't know. But I think maybe there's some ways that we can partner creatively to, to, to get through this little, little period of time. And I think some of the things that, that have been mentioned, facility, special ed, SIA and referrals could help. So if we could keep those in the agenda, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
But I want to end on, again, the district has been very, very supportive. Staff, everyone, I haven't felt that, and again, even though, and, and I certainly don't, we don't get what everything we want or what our demands, and I, I do want to call out that I appreciate the adjustments made to how we get funded. Opportunities, how we get funded has been helpful and much appreciated as well.
Thank you.
Jeffrey McGee, Principal at Rosemary Anderson Lynch Campus. For me, I really think it's a lot about enrollment, but right along with enrollment is access point. So we serve a lot of students that are older and far away from graduation. And in a lot of times, those are our success stories. But I'm just wondering who's plays the identifier to find those kids earlier so that we're getting them sophomore year versus fifth year senior. I think that has a lot to do with how we'll start to get that graduation rate to go up. I think a lot of times we're put in a position to do something and to really change the outlook for a student and a family that has never been done before, right? We're trying to show this kid and their family that they can be a successful high school student. And even though they weren't doing that their first three years in a comprehensive setting.
Right.
So that's a heavy lift for us as an alternative school. And so I'm just wondering, are there things in place that can identify so that at our comprehensive, I don't think we should have as many kids getting to their junior or senior year with two credits? And then saying, hey, Rosemary Anderson, work your magic with this kid. Because there's a lot of things that go along with that. We have to rebuild that trust of the actual system first. Engage that parent that maybe have not been engaged before and then have this kid and this family see success firsthand. And so I'm just wondering if there's a identifier, if there's a system created to identify these students. I'll, you know, go on the record and say today, you know, I talked to a comprehensive high school about a young lady that's coming to our campus. Everybody that I talked to in that building is like, oh, this student would be a better fit at your school. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then I asked the number one question, has anybody referred this student to Reconnections? No. So this young lady walked into our orientation last week on her own accord. No referral system, no nothing, yet everybody within the school says, yes, this student need a smaller setting. So I just think we need to come up with a better way of helping students and families see that there's, you know, a number of options. But then how are we working with the families at the comprehensive level if this is what they need for their child to see success?
Thank you. Before we go to staff, because I also want to hear from staff, I want to make sure that I take this moment to all the CBOs to say, thank you for being open to share. And I ask that we continue to do what we've, what we've been doing, which is stay at the table. Because changes happen, you know what I'm saying, at the table. But let's come to the table and talk about this consistently and not simply when, when we have something that we want to talk about, right? Everybody shows up when they have something that they want to talk about. But we need to be talking about this stuff all the time. This should be the mode of communication. We should be, okay, how are students doing? Where are we at? Who's graduating? Who needs supports? And, okay, so now what are the other pieces, the underlying pieces that are either going to allow us to continue to do this or do this better? or do this better? Because there, there's, it's not that this stuff isn't working. But the question becomes, can we do it better and make it more efficient? Not just effective, but more efficient. So a lot of this underlying stuff helps us to work on efficiency. So that's why it's still important. It's still important. It's, you know, it's not the student directly, but it, it does help us be more efficient when working with the students. So keep coming to the table. Let's keep talking about it. Let's keep processing this so that at the end of this, at the end of this term, when we get to the end of the school year and we're, we're wrapping this stuff up, we should be able to look and see exactly what we've done, how we've made changes to get us in a much better space so that we're not talking about this same stuff next year. We need this, we need, no, we, we've done something. So that's why I've been delaying the committee meeting. It's not because I don't want to meet. It's not because I don't think I have something I want to talk about. I just want to be very focused and very intentional about what I am talking about because I do not want to waste people's time. That is, that's something I can't, I can't stomach. So with that being said, now I'd like to hear from the, the staff that's in the room about what we would like to, what you would like to see and how do we work together to work, partner with our CBOs to, to do this thing both effective and efficient? Go team.
I can start. I think one of the things specifically as it relates to this committee is looking at the actual things that these schools are doing that are leading to success for students that have not had success in our comprehensive system. I think that's something that's often overlooked. Because I feel like oftentimes people are not asking how, why? We have students that are within our system and not successful and then they attend one of our CBO schools or alternative programs and all of a sudden are met with success. So if we're, and they're serving historically underserved students, higher concentrations of historically underserved students and high concentrations of special education students. So I do feel like there's something to unearth in terms of the strategies that these schools are implementing that our system can learn from. And I think we should use this as a potential spot where to explore those because these are things that our district have questions around too. How can we do this better? So I think there's a lot of wisdom to share back and forth between, um, our comprehensive system and alternatives.
Absolutely.
I defer to the experts.
That's what I always do, Jalen.
I'm really grateful Erica just said what she did because that is exactly what I'd say. Same with charter schools. Same thing is, we talk a lot about the data and student success within the schools. For those schools that are having success with, for example, uh, ESL students with, uh, special ed populations that are having pretty good success, what are we looking at to say, what is that school's pedagogical model? What are they doing that's different? What might we learn from that? That's a district. I, I appreciate Erica saying the same thing.
And I would just add, I appreciate both. But I would just add to that is part of in statute, the reason for charter schools is for, it's supposed to, and I would say for our alternative system, both in district and contracted alternative schools, is where's the innovation and how does, what are, what are the possibilities to share? That's often been one of the pieces that has been noted is how, how, what are the practices specifically? And I'll just talk about statute and charter schools. How are this, how are the practices shared with other leaders? And so I think that we, it's an ongoing pieces of work that need to happen. I think there's, I'm really excited to look at data. We're really excited to look at data. We've been, I've been, so I really appreciate that and look forward to that. I think, and also looking at data in the nuance of the students that, that, in the context of the students that we're serving.
Yes.
And so I use this example a lot. But I think, I use it because I think it's a, because it's a valid one. Is that when we look at data, what are the metrics that are relevant for, specifically for the communities that we're looking at? And I'm just going to do a really easy one with regard to attendance. So sometimes if you look at the metrics around severe or chronic attendance, there's, there's larger measures that are specific, that have specific cut points. In Alt Ed, I would say everywhere. But I would say in Alt Ed, I think one of the things that's really important to look at is how do we look at the growth in attendance? Because we might have somebody, I'm, I don't know, but I'm just going to tag on to, to Jeffrey's example. We might have someone who, and I've, I've done this before, in the role of a principal supervisor, where I'm looking at a student or we're looking at students and somebody's got 80% attendance, right? So that's in the red zone, right, with regard to attendance. But when you talk to families or students, sometimes you have students who used to attend once a week who are now attending four days a week. And so where, instead of kind of just making sure that when we look at data, that we're looking at, that we drilled down far enough, that we're really looking at, where are the celebrations in there too? And so if we just look at a piece of paper or graph, sometimes you look at Alt Ed and it's all full of red, right? Because it's all like the, um, where we are and, and the growth areas that we need. That's true. And what's the specific successes? And how do we identify those for the, for the specific students and for the specific school communities? And, and I would just add one more thing with regard to, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bookend, um, my friend right next to me, is, um, is I think there's multiple things that as a district that we need to continue to do across in all of our school settings. And those are our sit team meetings, so our student intervention team meetings. So when we look at like, who are the students in, in every setting that are having a hard time, that need that behavioral intervention, that need academic intervention, what does that look like? And then how are we connecting and providing those interventions? How are we also connecting with families? Because I, in your example, Jeffrey, my curiosity, one of them, is who's been reaching out and how connected has that family felt as a part of having a real pulse on how their student is doing? And maybe they have been, right? I don't make an assumption. Maybe they have been because they, and ma- and maybe they haven't been. But the, to, because the, the, the other tension that we have to hold is we have to hold, and I don't disagree, that if kids are, are showing us for long periods of time that they're unsuccessful in a setting, I do not disagree that we need to find a setting that they are successful in. I also want to name at the exact, like, end of next sentence, is that students and families have a right to attend their neighborhood school. And so I also don't want to add to push out into like, so I think we have to be really thoughtful around how we set up and set up structures. So it's not, so because we also, and we've also had in Reconnection Services and all the CBOs, um, kids who, students who share with us, they didn't like me. Nobody liked me there. They didn't want me to attend there. And it's not the student or family's issue. It's this, it's at, in those moments. And that, this happens in all schools too, right? It's sometimes the school that needs feedback as opposed to, to moving on to the next setting. So I just think we have to hold both of those with really like, where is family choice in this? And where's family connection in this?
Absolutely. Thank you. Ailey?
I'm good.
Okay. I think, um, I want to thank all of you. Yes.
Is, how's PPS's enrollment? Is it steady?
No, our numbers are down.
Like about, about?
Is that, I should know more.
I mean, that's.
I feel like, I feel like it's 6%.
I know our numbers are down. I don't know the exact number, but I, I do know that, that we, because when we were looking at, um, budget stuff, we were looking at the, the numbers being down. So therefore, it was going to cause us to possibly hurt in the next, the next go around. I just don't remember.
And that's, and that's how we were budgeted for this year was based on numbers that I think we've had conversations where
Yeah.
many of us, and not just PPS, I think around the state, thought that we were, our numbers were going to go down and they were going to come back up. And then we have not necessarily seen it come back up yet.
It's higher. We, it's, it's higher than what we had originally anticipated, you know, coming, coming back.